Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting of September 10th, 2018. Would you please rise and leading the pledge of allegiance tonight will be the Boy Scout Troop 321. So, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of agenda this evening?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe. Any one in the dais or anyone else wishing to change anything around? All right, we'll move on. Item 4A, presentations. First presentation is a city coin to Sergeant Steve Pettit for his years of service. I guess they didn't know how many years of service, Steve, so want to come up? You can tell us how many years. Sergeant Pettit has been our administrative sergeant here for how many years?
About three and a half.
Three and a half years, but has done an awful lot, and I'm going to let you tell it before I give you the thing about all your experience in law enforcement and other things.
Forty-two years in law enforcement. Started my career in seventy-seven with the Atherton Police Department, moved on to the Redwood City Police Department. I left and retired from there when I turned fifty. My wife let me stay home two days, and then I went to work for Sheriff Horsley, the sheriff's office. After 2010, when City of San Carlos outsourced, I was asked to join the ranks with Captain Roethlis, Assistant Sheriff Roethlis now, as a patrol sergeant, and then eventually as the admin sergeant.
Great time. Well, thank you very much for your service. The coin, if I can open it here, is the City of San Carlos, and it's given basically to folks that contribute to the betterment of San Carlos, and certainly you qualify for that in spades. So now you said you retired once, so you're going to retire again?
Retire again.
Is your wife here?
No, but I've already been given the word.
Yes, okay. Well, Steve, I don't know what else to say. I mean, would you like to say something else?
No, I'd just like to say thank you to Captain or Assistant Sheriff Roethlis, Captain Dury, and the others with the sheriff's office, and also the city staff. We had a lot of interesting conversations, and I enjoyed them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Steve. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Thank you a lot. Instead of walking all the way around, I can actually, what a concept, huh? So we have a couple of Eagle Scouts to honor tonight, and this is always a great, great pleasure for me to do. These young men do an awful lot of service for the community and all their different projects that they have. So I'm going to call up Nolan Cowett and Brett Dubois. If you guys stand up, and I'm going to let you each tell us what school you go to, what year you are, and what project you had. So.
Brett, you want to start? Hello, everybody. My name is Brett Dubois from Troop 321, San Carlos, and I go to Design Tech High School in Redwood Shores. I'm a senior there currently, and for my project, I built twenty bluebird houses for Edgewood Park, and we were placed about, I think, eight of them, and several of them were moved around and relocated to better locations on the trail to avoid people messing with them and to put them in more ideal locations for the birds. And, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Nolan. You want to tell us what you did and where you're from?
Thank you. My name's Nolan Cowett. I'm currently a junior at Sequoia High School. So for my project, we put in landscaping at Burton Park at the corner of Cedar and Arroyo, and it was a really great project for me. It taught me a lot. Since I designed the landscaping and we got to really, we got to take out the weeds and level the ground and put in the plants and put in the mulch. It was a really great experience for me, and I was super happy to be able to give back to the City of San Carlos.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I noticed, by the way, in both projects that you have helpers, which is great. So you do some work, I know, but it's great to have a bunch of folks that are helping you out on this. As I mentioned before, these young men, it is quite an achievement to be an Eagle Scout. It takes a lot of work. How many merit badges is it now?
There are thirteen required, or twelve required merit badges, but I earned a total of twenty-six.
That's what I mean. How many did you earn?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. I can only imagine. And each merit badge that you earn doesn't take five minutes, believe me. I remember as a Boy Scout, I didn't get that. I think I got seven or eight. That was about as high as I got. But anyway, I want to congratulate both of you and for all the hard work that you did and also for the great work that, like I said, give me back to the community. So thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Great. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is a person's wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have one card so far. Brian Jaffe. Mr. Jaffe, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city staff, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Jaffe, and I'm the creator of VOCA. VOCA is a new civic engagement platform that uses text messaging to make it easy for everyday people to share their opinions with local government. We've been doing this in Redwood City for over a year, and this past week, we just asked our first question here in San Carlos. VOCA responses are structured kind of like Yelp or Amazon reviews, with one meaning strongly disagree or oppose, and five meaning strongly agree or support. This week, VOCA asked San Carlos residents to rate the following statement: City council should expand the outdoor dining program on Laurel Street to additional locations. This, of course, is in response to the study session from your last city council meeting. In total, 120 San Carlos residents responded, sixty-one support expanding the outdoor dining program, forty oppose expanding the program, and the remaining nineteen are neutral. And you can see that in the handout that I, it should be making its way to you if you haven't seen it already. After VOCA users vote, they can also see other people's comments and upvote the ones they agree with. I will now read some of the top comments. In support: I like the outdoor dining, but Laurel Street parking is so hard right now. Maybe they can wait to expand outdoor dining until after the garages are finished. In opposition: I love the idea of outdoor dining. I have thoroughly enjoyed the outdoor experience at town. That said, parking on and near Laurel is horrendous. I can't support more outdoor dining without parking being expanded as well. In closing, VOCA will be asking a new question about a San Carlos issue each week going forward. Participation is free, easy, and anonymous, and you can sign up at our website, which is voca.vote. That's V-O-C-A dot V-O-T-E. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffe. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any item not on the posted agenda this evening? Okay, we'll move on. Next item is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually enacted by one motion unless someone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So, gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent calendar. I second. Moved in second, and is there any discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
That's Member Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Gergo Cott.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Obert.
I am voting yes, except on item 6E, on which I'd like you to record a no vote.
Okay. And Mayor Grisilli.
Yes. All right, thank you. Item seven, public hearing. Consideration of adopting three resolutions for the Winding Way project. Number one, adopting the addendum to the final focused environmental impact report. Number two, approving the master development plan, protected tree removal permit, and lot line adjustment. Number three, summarily vacating the public right of way.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The Winding Way project is perhaps one of the most rigorously evaluated and analyzed projects in the last twenty years, and tonight would be the final step in the city council review of this project. The city council reviewed it previously when it was annexed to the city, and the last, the real last step would be with the planning commission as they would review the design of the homes later in the process. Tonight, to present you with the details of the project and to answer questions, is Jeff Ballantyne, our consulting planner. So he'll walk you through the project and the planning commission recommendation, and then I will be available, as will Lisa Porus, our principal planner, and Jeff, to answer questions. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Savay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Ballantyne. I've been a contract planner with the city for the last year and a half, so working on this project. So, yeah, it's the Winding Way Master Development Plan. So ultimately, the applicant would like to develop five single-family houses, houses on five lots, along with doing roadway improvements on a currently unimproved portion of Winding Way. So the actions before you tonight are to approve the SEQA addendum, master development plan, a lot line adjustment, a tree removal permit, as well as a right-of-way abandonment. Here's just to give you a little context of where the project's located in the larger Here's more up close. You see here the project site in red. You see two prongs essentially on the top. One of those is connecting to Chesham Avenue, and the other is to Upper Here for existing conditions, the site has a lot of topography and a lot of slope to it, and you get a little sense of that here. And here's a photo of the existing unimproved dirt roadway that is Winding Way. So this project has a lot of history to it. Back in March of 2004, the city council of San Carlos approved pre-zoning, essentially pre-zoning the site to low-density residential, and that was to start the process for annexing the project site into the city limits. Right after that, a mitigated negative declaration was adopted, and soon after that, the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance sued the document, and then ultimately, a settlement agreement was reached between the city and the applicant and this alliance. A number of things came out of that agreement, one of them being the city needed to prepare a final focused environmental impact report specifically to evaluate impacts to Dusky Fodder Wood Rat and the Bush Mall plant. And there were also other conditions placed on the project as a result of this agreement, including reduced roadway to eighteen feet, pedestrian path, as well as an access gate restricting access to essentially the residence of Upper Winding Way. And then a number of years passed, and in 2009, the final focused EIR was indeed adopted by the city, and the site was annexed into the city limits. And then just in the last few months, the project's been before two planning commission meetings. So the master development plan, this was a requirement placed on the project as part of the annexation approvals. And essentially, what this does is basically show where the lot lines are, where the right-of-way is, and the proposed roadway, where the creek is, and the creek setbacks, and basically just showing footprints of where houses could be located. At a later date, the applicant will need to get designer view approval of each house by planning commission. And here you see four houses on the upper portion, and it slopes downward as you go up, and then the creek is where you see those trees. So one of the other entitlements for tonight is a lot line adjustment, and this is to meet the requirement of the annexation approvals, that each lot be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. And so this would not be creating any new lots, it would just be adjusting lot lines between four parcels. As well as a right-of-way abandonment. So the city currently owns an easement over the 50-foot right-of-way of Winding Way, and so this is proposing, you see those three portions in hash marks, to be abandoned to each of the individual parcels. And again, the purpose there is to help each parcel achieve 20,000 square feet. Another entitlement is protected tree removal permit. This is tree impacts specifically related to the proposed roadway. Of the 20 trees proposed for removal, 10 are protected trees and they're coast live oaks. trees and they're coast live oaks. And so as one of the conditions of approval on the project is that the applicant would need to provide 10 replacement trees. So neighbor concerns. So we received a lot of feedback from a number of different neighbors and a lot of different aspects of the project. First of which was the dirt haul route. Back in July '16, planning commission reviews, reviewed the first proposal for the dirt haul route. We received a lot of feedback, a lot of concerns from the neighbors. I'll delve into that more in the following slides. And then during the planning commission meeting in July, one of the concerns was construction and dirt hauling hours. And so condition 14 restricts construction between Monday and Friday and does not allow work on the weekends. And then condition 15 restricts dirt hauling from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then finally, parking on Chesham, that was raised as a concern by a number of, a couple of the neighbors. And so condition 16 requires that no parking of construction vehicles occur on the paved portion of Chesham Avenue. So here's the originally proposed dirt haul route. You see, it goes towards the southeast. You see the site with the red star, and then it goes up Chesham, down to Windsor, and then takes a right on Torino. And that's really the problematic churn right there. A house right at that dead end has actually been hit a couple of times. And so that was one of the major concerns as well, is it utilizes a pretty substantial portion of county roads. And so this was the revised dirt haul route that came before planning commission on August 20th last month, which they ultimately approved. And it goes more towards the northeast, taking left on Windsor from Chesham, and then eventually getting up to San Carlos Avenue. And then in terms of long-term neighbor concerns that we received, one of them was the access gate that I mentioned from settlement agreement. So during the planning commission meeting in July, they directed staff to work with the city attorney, as well as with the fire marshal, to explore if there's options to allow emergency access for those neighbors up in upper Winding Way, to be able to get through that gate in case of emergencies such as a fire. However, in talking with the fire marshal and with the city attorney, one, the fire marshal mentioned a concern in terms of not having emergency personnel be available to go open that gate, for the obvious reasons that they'll be busy with an emergency. And then the city attorney mentioned a concern with allowing access to neighbors, because essentially that'd be in conflict with the settlement agreement. And he can provide more information on that if you'd like. The next concern was creek crossing. One neighbor asked about, you know, looking to do a bridge instead of a culvert at the major creek crossing. However, what the applicant proposing is essentially replacing an existing culvert that is dilapidated and no longer functioning. So they're replacing like-for-like. And they've already gone through a significant amount of review with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, to really look at this proposal very carefully to minimize any impacts to the creek. And then next concern, retaining wall heights and safety. So a number of neighbors were concerned with in terms of the retaining wall along the roadway, in terms of its overall bulk and height. And so their attachment tin in your packet shows what the retaining wall would look like and what the proposed heights are. And then with the safety, planning commission placed condition 11 on the project, requiring that additional safety fencing be placed on the upsloping portions of the retaining wall, with the concern that if a child or somebody were to fall off the retaining wall, it would be dangerous. And then driveway access. One neighbor was concerned that the proposed roadway was going to impede their driveway access. And so the applicant has since revised their proposed roadway and has met with the neighbor. And neighbors indicated that the revised proposal is acceptable to them. And then just the last two was really just beefing up indication that the project needs to comply with the FFEIR, as well as including verbatim the mitigation measures. And then street lighting, one neighbor indicated concern in terms of having too much street lighting. And my understanding is that the applicant's not required to provide it, nor do they intend to provide street lighting. They can correct me if I was wrong on that one. On the environmental review, I've already mentioned MMD was adopted in 2004, the FFEIR in 2009. One thing I do want to mention is the FFEIR really only included an updated biological resources chapter, and then incorporated by reference all of the other chapters in the MMD, since those were not challenged. And then an addendum was prepared recently with the reason that the FFEIR and the MMD had been adopted so many years ago. And what that addendum essentially found was that no substantial changes occurred to the project or to circumstances, and no new information was available to indicate that any of the items in the checklist for CEQA resulted in a substantial environmental impact that had not already been addressed in the FFEIR. I already mentioned the involvement of the top three agencies. Also want to mention County of San Mateos involved, because one segment of the roadway that connects to the upper portion of Winding Way is in the county's jurisdiction. And so we will definitely need their approval before Public Works can ultimately approve the street improvement plans. And just on this one, this just shows you mitigation areas as directed by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The area in purple is the riparian area to be protected. And the areas shown in A, B, D, and C are mitigation areas where the applicant will actually need to provide new plantings to really actually improve the plantings in the creek area, and to mitigate impacts to the Dusky Fodder Woodrat and the Bush Mall plant. So in summary, for the planning commission actions, they provided recommendations that city council adopt this CEQA addendum, as well as master development plan, a lot and adjustment of the protected tree removal permit. And they also made the following final actions, subject to council approval of the master development plan. And that was the road abandonment, general plant consistency finding, as well as the master grading plan, and the grading and dirt haul certificate. So with that, this is a summary of actions before the council, available for questions. And also want to note that the applicant is here tonight and has also prepared a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for the presentation. Let's see. The abandonment of the right-of-way entitlements, I'm not, I know we've acted on a few of those since I've been on the council, but I'm not that familiar with them. What does the community get for abandoning the right-of-ways?
I don't believe there's necessarily, there's something that they're offering. I think the idea here is that there's 50-foot of right-of-way, and applicant only needs a portion of that for the actual roadway.
Okay, because the road itself is not going to be as large as the right-of-way, unlike in other parts of, other parts of the community. Maybe, if you don't mind, my question maybe is, if I can direct to Jeff, do we, is that not uncommon, that we abandon right-of-ways?
It's not uncommon in the situation of new developments like this, yeah.
Yes, we haven't seen too many new developments lately.
That's correct. We don't get a lot of subdivisions anymore.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Condition 16, which was the no parking on Chesham Avenue, do you recall when that was added? Was that added during the, the planning commission study, or?
Correct. That was added, I believe it was in the August meeting. And that was because a number of neighbors did express concern that they did not want any.
The reason I was asking is just because I think we all received an email today from somebody who is concerned about parking. And it sounds like that had already been addressed, which is, I'm just fine for somebody to object to it or be concerned about it. I just wanted to make sure it's the same issue.
I believe so.
Let's see. The dirt hauling with the revised route, can you remind me again what hours the dirt hauling can take place?
Sure. So that is 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that's specifically for trucks with more than nine wheels, so for the large dirt hauling trucks.
Okay. That's probably, I mean, I've just, San Carlos Avenue is pretty busy even at the beginning and ends of that time, but, but hopefully that won't be too bad. And then I think my last question is Greg Rubin's question. The, I thought it was interesting with the description of the issue about possibly relocating the gate or making the gate more openable. Does, does a legal settlement such as was entered into, does that create any kind of safe harbor if there's a problem that develops during an emergency because equipment can't get through, or people can't get out, or, because I know part of the argument for not being able to make a tweak to it was because of the existence of the settlement agreement. So does it work the other way, too?
Well, you know, I, that's, it's an interesting hypothetical you're asking me. And, and I think the, the settlement agreement is kind of the baseline of what the city's already previously agreed to. So to the extent that the city agreed to that 10 years ago, and we're constrained from taking a different course of action, I think that does offer some liability protection in that, some sort of hypothetical claim like that.
Okay. Let's all hope that we never have to test that. But, okay. I think that was it for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple. Can you bring that map up that shows the outline of the project, the one with the red outline? I'm just a little confused as to where in that outline this project is. You just have an arrow that points to project site, but is, oh, I see. Is that that little, where it says Winding Way there? So that's the area there?
Yeah. So the reason, you see those two prongs on the, the top? Those are the, the roadway connecting to existing paved portions of Chesham and paved portions of Winding Way. And then the big bulk of it is where you have four parcels within sort of that Winding Way that curves around it. And then you have one other parcel on the outer edge. And it helps, I think, if I pull up. You can cut, this is, if you flip it upside down.
So you're going to be creating a road, is that right?
So it currently, it's, it's unpaved dirt roadway.
And it's, is it, is it the width that it will be, or will it need to be widened?
Well, that's a, that's a tough question. I think at one point, it was drivable, but over the years, it's really eroded. So in terms of its exact width, I think it varies.
Okay. All right. And then I only had one other question. I know you said there's going to take out 20 trees and they're going to replant some. Is there a, a plan for the type of trees? Are they going to, I assume they'll be native?
Right. So that'll be, I believe, up to planning commission to determine, when they, when they come back for designer view approval of what their proposal is. So that'll be up to planning commission to review and approve of those.
Okay.
But yeah, no current plans.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
So the question I have regards the condition 16. Couple of questions. We, so we've received some correspondence from neighbors that are concerned about the parking. And it seems as though they're still concerned about parking on Chesham on the curve of the street. It says in here that the developers agreed not to park on any paved portion of Chesham. So I, I assume that language would mean that the curved portion cannot be parked on. Is that correct?
So yeah, it's my understanding, there's unpaved portions that are actually on their property. And I believe, you know, we can't really restrict them from not parking on their own property.
Right.
So I believe that's what that condition does, is essentially you can't park on the city's right-of-way of Chesham, but you can park on your own property.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question on that. If we were to do anything to condition 16, to include language that might say something like, including the, you know, curved portion, the last curved portion before entering the site, A, is that, would that upset the apple cart for what's on the dais tonight if we did that? And B, because we've got so many things that we're taking action on for this one project, where does that fit in? Where would we put that in?
Yeah. So I believe if you would want to make that change, it would be to that condition 16 for that resolution.
Yeah, but what, so, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses tonight, and I'm having a little trouble putting things together here. So just which, which action tonight would include condition 16?
So that's in the resolution for the master, there's a three, three entitlements in the one resolution. It includes the master development plan, the tree removal permit, and the lot line adjustment. It's the second resolution in the packet.
Second reso in the packet. Okay. Just so I know where I am and when to do that, if we're going to do that at all. So, okay. Thanks very much. What's your name again?
Jeff Ballantyne.
Jeff. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, just through the chair, just some helpful thought on that condition 16 in light of Councilmember Grokot's concerns. We could say during road construction activities, construction vehicles and equipment will not be allowed to be parked or stored on or along the paved area, or paved portion of Chesham. Now it just says on the paved portion. I think that might be some of the confusion that's there. Because if you say literally on, well, they're not even allowed to park on, but that, that sounds like, I think the intention, and I was at that meeting, the intention was along Chesham.
Sorry. So what you're, the clarifier, clarification you're making is anywhere there's pavement, even alongside the road, no parking?
That's right.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So public safety is passed on all this? In other words, the fire department can get their vehicles up there and whatever?
Yes, this has been through multiple rounds of review, I think four or five rounds. And yes, one of the conditions is placed is that the, there's an 18-foot roadway, as well as a three-foot pedestrian path, and that pedestrian path needs to support fire. And they've been through multiple iterations to make sure the slope is appropriate and the churning radius as well.
Okay.
And the fire marshal is here.
Okay, as long as they approve it. Now, when you put, you said gates. Is there going to be one gate, two gates? How does, where are the gates going to be? If you could go back to the, maybe even to the, one Ron was talking about, the red, where are the gates going to be? Or are there more ga, one gate, two gates? What are there? Oops, my buttons. Okay. So basically, then the only people that'll be able to get through there are the people who own the property? The five homeowners? Okay. So, but there's no gate at Chesham?
There is currently, I believe there is a gate, but that will be removed.
So if I'm driving on Chesham, I can now drive into this property?
Correct.
And go all the way around, and then I get stuck when I get, try to get out? I'd have to make a U-turn or something to come around. I'm just, I'm just asking. In other words, so it's going to be a public roadway?
I believe it will be privately owned and maintained.
It's actually, my recollection is that it's, it's a public roadway. That's one of the items, that's why we're abandoning part of it.
Okay.
But it's gonna, there's going to be a requirement that it be maintained by the property owners.
Okay, I understand that. But I'm just saying, if Joe Smith wants to take a ride someday, he can come up Chesham, go all the way through all those five houses, and then stop and get stuck at a gate. He can't get out, and he'll have to just make a U-turn and come back and.
You will have to, they'll have to maneuver their vehicle and turn around.
And drive up there.
People will be able to drive.
So I'm missing the point of why having, why, why is there a gate, then?
Well, this is a, this, well, first of all, that was, again, another condition of the settlement agreement, that there be a gate there in that, and, okay, because I've been around long enough.
I know, I have too, but I can't remember.
So the reason for the gate there is, it was originally, it's a kind of a, the gate right now is in disrepair, but the, the new gate is to allow fire access. And the fire marshal can probably speak to this, but I'm going to summarize, that the gate enables the development to be a through road for fire protection purposes, so that, so a turnaround is not required there, because the fire department has access. Under the settlement agreement, the public and the plaintiffs in that case were concerned that, that this would become a through road. Primarily, the, the people who live along Winding Way might perceive that the shorter way to leave the neighborhood would be to go through this area.
Eliminate a shortcut?
Yes.
Okay. For, in English, eliminate a shortcut. Okay, that's fine. I just want, I couldn't remember, because it seems odd to have a gate, but that you can go in the other way. Okay. The dirt haul hours are 9 to 4. What are the construction hours?
Shoot, I need, I need to pull that up. That, I believe, standard.
Please, tell me what they are.
Standard city protocol. I, I just need to pull that up in my packet.
Okay, go ahead and get it.
All right.
I got, I have time. Because they're not going to haul dirt on the weekends, but they certainly might be able to construct, so. Mr. Grove, do you know? Right. But I, but sometimes weekends are allowed, so that's why I'm asking. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's 8 to 5 construction, Monday through Friday?
So yeah, the, the specific hours aren't in here because it defaults to whatever's in the municipal code.
That's fine. As long as, I'm just trying to identify if there's some adjustment or whatever. So, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And on the dirt haul, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Grove, because I, and you may know, how many, how many trips?
20, 20 round trips.
20?
Yes.
That's all?
That's all. What, the intent there is all of the graded. What, the intent there is, all of the grading will actually be utilized for infill. This is really just mostly debris and such.
Okay, so, 20 trips, and how many trips a day estimated?
What, they estimate one every two weeks?
1.5 trips a week. So, will, it'll take, okay? All right? Okay. So, it'll take a long time, but the, the impact to the roads is going to be very minimal, because you're only going to have one and a half a week. So, maybe once, one day or two days a week, there might be trucks.
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to identify that. All right. This is a public hearing, and I have speaker cards, so I will call folks up. Thank you for your presentation. There may be some other questions? Sure. Mr. Grove, did you want to say anything? I didn't mean to cut you out of it. Did you want to have any? Okay. If you could identify yourself. Don't ask me. Ask him. I'm consistent. See, there's other people. Could you identify yourself, sir?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. My name is Michael Chilcote. My partner, Ronald Grove, and I are the sole owners of this canyon and the project in front of you this evening. And?
Thanks.
Okay. I'm sorry, a little bit of this will be repetitive, but hopefully, the points will be underscored. As mentioned by Jeff, the site, of course, has an existing unusable gravel road and a non-functional drainage system. The drainage system was designed to prevent erosion of the road and canyon, but unfortunately, it was constructed with wood and corrugated metal pipe, which is not a design for longevity. And, coupled with that, it has also been unmaintained for years. Therefore, the drainage system was rendered non-functional for approximately a decade or so. The result of this caused a road and canyon to suffer erosion in multiple locations and an extreme washout location. Winter rains become sediment flows into downstream waterways. Stormwater and debris flows across the intersection of Chesham and Winding Way during heavy rains. It is currently a dangerous condition due to the buildup of overgrown and dead vegetated material. There is no fire department or no emergency vehicle access in this canyon. Therefore, a fire in this canyon could be, unfortunately, catastrophic. There have also been recent graffiti incidences. And perhaps the most important, if left unimproved, this canyon and gravel road will erode further. This project in front of you this evening remedies all the foregoing and improves life safety conditions in the San Carlos hills. So, I have a few photos of the site. This photo shows the extent of the washout, which has exponentially worsened since the drainage system failed a decade or so ago. This clearly shows difficulty of access and frankly, a dangerous condition for pedestrians. This image shows the corrugated metal pipe that is clearly rusted, broken, and non-functional. Here, we show the unfortunate recent graffiti situation in the canyon. We are aware of several neighbors phoning into the city voicing their displeasure of this. But, this project proposal transforms this image into this image. Here, we show an artist rendering of the same road section. We have incorporated the retaining wall material requested by planning staff, which is an earth-tone split-faced block material. We would submit to council that this is quite an improvement from the previous image, and we feel is aesthetically appealing as well. Prior to gaining the privilege to be in front of council this evening, the project team can assure the council that we have worked long and hard with all these government agencies and departments listed on this slide. And it is these agencies that have specified, in fact, in some cases dictated, several of the details of the project in front of council this evening. And those agencies, as Jeff mentioned, we have two from the state, Fish and Wildlife, which granted an original approval, and then a recent reinspection and extension of that approval, which was dated March 23rd of this year. The Regional Water Quality Control Board, of course, also approved the project. From the federal level, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers also granted an original approval, and then a recent reinspection and extension of that approval, which was December of last year. And at the local level, of course, we worked with your Public Works Department, your planning department, and the fire department. Having said the foregoing, we have had two neighbor outreach meetings in the past year and two very recent public hearings with the planning commission. We did listen to the comments made in these forums and wish to be receptive to the input received from the Open Space Alliance and the rest of the neighbors. Hence, we have made the following revisions to the project based on input from the community. And we just touched on some of this, I'll be brief. Construction, again, will be limited to the weekdays. We changed the haul route based on safety concerns and past history of accidents. Large trucks are limited to the haul route from the hours of 9 to 4. And we self-instituted a traffic management plan, which says there will be no parking on city streets by employees, subcontractors, or delivery vehicles, all parking to be accommodated on the job site. Limited occasional parking at the lower entrance of the project just off Chesham, however, will be prevented. Again, that's limited and occasional. There will be no turning around of trucks on city streets. A turnaround area currently exists on the job site. There will be no need to inconvenience the current residents by stopping vehicular traffic or pedestrians on city streets. And finally, we are imposing a 15 mile an hour speed limit on all trucks above nine wheels utilizing the planning commission-approved haul route. Likewise, staff and the fire department have made requests that we have complied with. Public Works requested a vehicle protective guardrail be installed on the lower side of the road, which we agreed to. Planning suggested the earth-tone split-faced block material for the retaining walls above the road, which we agreed to, and you saw a rendering of. And fire department made two requests. They requested that the pedestrian path adjacent to the road be engineered to support the weight of the fire truck. And also, they requested a fuel reduction and maintenance plan to, quote, "reduce the danger to, to the future structures that will be built in the future and existing neighbors from a wildfire." Now, not every suggestion from the neighborhood at large were we able to implement. Three of those suggestions or concerns are noted here, and we wish to preemptively have a response to these items should one or more be raised this evening in front of council. Firstly, I would like to reemphasize that this project proposal strictly adheres to both the terms of the suit settlement agreement and the specifications set forth by the federal agencies, the state agencies, and your local agencies. So, it has recently been suggested that we build a bridge to span the current top of banks. And our answer? The approving federal and state agencies unanimously want the canyon restored, specifically, the Fish and Wildlife original agreement and the extension this last March. Section 3, titled Riparian Restoration, states, and I quote, "Permittees shall restore the area that has eroded upstream of the culvert." This project complies with this clause in the Fish and Wildlife Agreement, and with your approval, the project team will restore this canyon as instructed. There were also a couple concerns raised by neighbors and the Open Space Alliance. Concern number one is this project will damage the Riparian Corridor by filling it with concrete. Our answer to that is, again, in the Fish and Wildlife original agreement and extension, that agreement states, and I quote, "Future housing construction requires a 25-foot creek setback line where no construction activity can occur." So, obviously, it's, if that's the case, there will be no concrete in the Riparian Corridor. And their second concern, this project is in violation of the environmental impact report, sensitive species requirements. I believe H.D. Harvey and Associates is our ecological consulting firm. They are here this evening to talk about that just for a minute or two, but we have retained them to ensure that we are going to be compliant with the FEIR. In summary, the project team would like to state the benefits of this project for both city and community. This new road, pedestrian path, and drainage system will improve life safety conditions in the Devonshire Canyon. Currently, a fire in this canyon would have unimpeded access to ridge lines and neighboring homes. This road, this new road, would provide much-needed ingress and egress locations for firefighters and emergency vehicles in the hills of San Carlos. This project will further stabilize the canyon from further erosion. It is engineered for longevity with a concrete drainage headwall and high-grade plastic piping. This stormwater collection system, as mentioned, will also need to be maintained by the, by the new owners of the homes, as well as the road. This project will eliminate sediment flows in the downstream waterways. It will eliminate stormwater flows across the intersections of Chesham and Winding Way, and it will facilitate safe, and we think, wonderful walking access for the new owners, all the neighbors, and the community at large. That's the end of my presentation. Is Harvey and Associates here?
My name is--
Oh, excellent. Okay. So, having said that, I would just like to introduce them, please, to give you guys a brief status of the ecological situation in the canyon.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Dave Johnston. I'm an ecological consultant with H.D. Harvey and Associates. Our headquarters is in Los Gatos, California, and that is also where my office is. I was first introduced to this project about maybe 12 years ago, and I met with the Department of Fish and Game staff there on the project site. Yes?
How long is your presentation?
No more than three minutes.
Fine, thank you.
And Fish and Game, as the FEIR, also stated that two issues were the Accurate Bush Mallow and also the San Francisco Dusky-Footed Wood Rat. There had been a surveys earlier, previous consultant. We redid those about 12 years ago and found 58 wood rat nests. We found two bush mallow plants. We recently have redone both surveys. We found no bush mallow plants, and this is by expert botanists. I did not do those surveys. And apparently, those plants live 10 years or less, and they think possibly because of the extreme drought conditions, the two plants, or two or three plants that were there previously, may not have survived. There are more wood rats today than there were. In order to build the road, we've identified a couple dozen wood rat nests that will have to be moved or translocated. We've had excellent success doing this for the state of California, for many agencies, including the Santa Clara Valley Water District and, and several government entities on the peninsula here, including Caltrans. So, those are, those were the two conditions and, and concerns of Fish and Game, and, you know, we are monitoring them and addressing them.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you. Questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Grokot?
I have a question for the guy who just, the gentleman who just sat down.
You asked the question?
Over here on the dais.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's okay. I'm just curious, on the dusky-footed wood rat, how much need there is for protection of these, because, you know, just from my own experience, every time I go hiking, anywhere in San Carlos, be it Big, you know, the canyon off of Britton, or Edgewood Park, or anywhere, I always see these nests. So, it appears to me that these things are not that endangered. I'm just a hiker.
Yeah. Well, it's, it, it's complicated, and yet it's not. But the short story is, it's because of a unique population called the San Francisco Dusky-Footed Wood Rat. The genetics presumably were only on this peninsula. However, Marjorie Maddock, who's a geneticist, looked at all of these dusky-footed wood rats and found that this genetic type is actually the same as it is in the inner coast range, all the way down to Bakersfield and, and on up into the Sierra. And therefore, she considers this the same subspecies as a much larger, what we call a clade. I have since actually recommended to Fish and Game and their mammal species of special concern that they don't include the San Francisco Dusky-Footed Rat, Wood Rat, based on Dr. Maddock's work, which was a good five years ago. And nonetheless, Fish and Game is, I think, three years late in publishing their newest species of special concern. So, it remains as a species of special concern, but when they come out with that document, it will likely have been removed.
Thank you.
That's the inside story.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. More than I needed, but--
I just have one quick question. If this is approved, all these things are approved tonight, when are you going to start grading or moving dirt? Could you come up? I apologize. Sorry.
My name's Ron Grove.
Sure.
Whenever we get permission. We can start as soon as we get our permits. And I think we've gone through extensive--
Isn't there a deadline of like October 15th or something? And you can't move dirt after that, or?
I'm not real positive on the--
Okay, I can find out from staff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. So, what's the answer to that question? Grace, or, thanks, Grace.
Grading moratorium from October 1st to, yeah, to May.
All right. So, basically, if they can't get their permits before October 1st, then they're stuck till April or March?
End of April. May 1st.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, and I have some speaker cards. Brad Freeman? Try to limit the comments to about two or three minutes if you can. Thank you.
I live on 203 Chesham, right at the gate where the project begins. I'm going to kind of repeat what was just said, but I'd like to provide a few points that highlight why we are in favor of the project. It will make the canyon safer for all the residents in the area. It will remove the unsightly graffiti and provide less of an environment to attract further graffiti. It's been getting worse lately. It will fix existing drainage and erosion issues of the creek. It will provide a permanent hiking trail for the canyon. It will provide additional housing in a responsible manner that fits the character of the neighborhood. All of this will be done at no cost to the residents of San Carlos, plus guarantee new revenues to the city going forward.
Thank you very much for comments. John McIntosh? Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I'm, I am a homeowner in Devonshire Canyon, and thus, the name canyon implies slope, as, as you know, and as I think the planner mentioned. And when there's slope, there's water, and my concern has to do with water. Though I'm sure that these plans have been exceptionally rigorous and analyzed to the nth degree, it has been my experience that sometimes water will find a way. And so, my, I'm not really for or against this project or this specific development, but I do have a hypothetical question or concern. And, and it goes like this. If it's proven that this development does divert water, unintentionally or inconsequently to another property or to another space and causes damage, which party would be responsible, let's say, in a year or two, if that damage were to occur, again, as a result of the development? Would it be the developer, the current homeowner, the city, the person who was, who, the person whose property was damaged? So, that's, that's my question.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Rubens, you want to answer that or have any idea? It's really, it depends, I think, is what you're going to say.
Well, you know, I, I think the, the basic, this is, I, I, obviously, it was, as was stated, this is a project that's been in the plans for a long time. It's been reviewed by the city departments and the state. What-- It's been reviewed by the city departments and the state. What is, the public improvements to deal with drainage on the site have all been reviewed by the city engineer and the city departments. The approvals require maintenance of these items by the property owners. There's going to be a homeowners association of these five homes. So, to the extent that this project contributes to a problem, it'll be dealt with by the, by the homeowners. To the extent that, in some way, that the city is somehow contributed to this, I've seen cases where the city is named as a potential defendant, but the agreements are designed to put the responsibility on the homeowners.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is David Fedor. Sorry if I missed that.
That's enough. Thanks, evening. My name is David Fedor, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. I live at 420 Winding Way. That's right at the top of the current Upper Winding Way terminus, at the location of the proposed gate to be locked. I want to thank staff for, you know, working with me over the past few months on this issue. We talked about the public health and safety concerns we have with a locked manual gate blocking the roadway. Tonight, I just want to reiterate my opposition to the existence of this gate blocking Winding Way. Winding Way was dedicated in 1924 as a public right-of-way, as a straight loop. That map, as laid out today, has been on everyone's property deeds for nearly 100 years, showing the intent to complete that loop, and for that reason, Winding Way has been developed without any sort of turnaround capabilities at all, except maybe, you know, a few neighbor's driveways. It's a very rotten, winding, and narrow road, as the name suggests. I believe that putting this gate on the road is in violation of San Carlos general plan guidelines, which encourage interconnectedness of city streets. San Carlos general plan further goes on to suggest that traffic mitigation measures can include traffic calming devices such as speed bumps and road hubs and chicanes. It does not mention gates. San Carlos municipal code, as mentioned by Mr. Rubens, states that it does not permit dead-end streets, and requires a turnaround capability, which has been interpreted here to refer only to fire apparatus, though I don't see it stated as such in municipal code. So, it's my belief that this goes against city, city guidelines and code. I want to thank the, you know, the comments from the fire marshal at the planning commission, and I believe he's here tonight regarding his concerns on the health and safety of having the gate across this road that would prevent vehicular access, namely, in the event of a large fire, wildfire, or other regional conflagration in the canyon, such as an earthquake. This isn't a hypothetical scenario. USGS estimates a one-third chance of magnitude 6.7 earthquake on the Hayward Fault in the next 25 years, similar chances on the San Andreas Fault, so it's actually better than expected odds to occur. And when that occurs, USGS expects over 400 fires to be set, through broken gas lines and down electricity lines throughout the region, and no access to water. In the Santa Rosa fires, the fire was recorded at traveling at 50 miles an hour up canyon walls, and the fire marshal stated that he would likely be unable to open this gate for vehicular access in the case such an emergency. Winding Way only has one other access that has been blocked on numerous occasions in the past through down trees, landslides. It happened when this haul truck hit the house upon a tureen, and my wife and I had to hike into our house from the back of the canyon. I appreciate the efforts to mitigate the health and safety aspects of that gate. However, the best mitigation would be to not have a gate in the first place. There's been reference to the settlement agreement that was signed in 2004, so it's a long time ago. I believe the settlement agreement is faulty. It was negotiated. It's not a court order. It was a voluntary legal agreement the city entered into with the developer and a subset of residents in the area, namely, residents from Upper Winding Way were not consulted and were not party to that settlement. And so, that's how resulted in a decision to block them from using the road through the gate. I'm not familiar with another case.
Are you just about through, because you've already run way over?
Thanks. I'm almost done.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with another case in which a third party has been asked to mitigate for traffic impacts. You know, we are not causing traffic impacts. The traffic impacts are from the new development, and a third party is being obligated in order to, to, to deal with that without any traffic studies having been done or turnaround studies of the absence of a gate. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker I have is Diane.
My name is Diane Ray. I live at 123 Chesham Avenue, and I'm the one who wrote the email you received. I didn't receive a notice of this hearing or this being on the agenda, so I wasn't aware of it until Friday. And when I looked, I didn't see condition 16. Jeff was kind enough to send me a pointer today, so I went for the safer way, which was to let you all know about the concerns. The language in condition 16 is very different from what I saw at the planning commission. So, if I could ask two questions, it seems to me there's a conflict. Condition 16 is very clear that there will be no parking on paved space, and I believe you're saying that there will be...
Ma'am, please talk to us.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I believe they're saying that there will be occasional parking at the entrance. I presume that's on paved space, because if it's on their property and not on paved space, well, that's fine. I mean, that doesn't create a safety issue. So, it seems like there's a conflict. There's a condition 16 saying it won't happen, and then in the presentation, we're hearing that it will happen. And I don't know if you've been over there, but, you know, if you visit that area, I think it's pretty clear what the risk is. My other question was, or I just wanted to comment regarding the letter of another person from Chesham Avenue, that, of the issue of putting concrete in the creek. In the diagram that Jeff showed, there was a purple riparian area going through the crossover with Winding Way. So, it looks like that's where concrete is going to be put, and it is going across the creek, and that's why that was addressed in a letter. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kate Faff. If I said that right?
Hello, my name is Kate Faff, and I guess you could say tonight I'm speaking for the trees. I guess I'm a Lorax tonight. I teach the Bugs Garden Program at Britton Acres, and over there, I teach my students to see all of nature as interconnected. So, when I hear that 20 trees are coming down, 10 of which are coastal live oaks, I'm concerned. Live oaks are a keystone species. Everything else depends on them. The roots anchor the canyon. They prevent erosion. The leaf litter helps control which invasive plants are able to grow underneath that, that oak tree, because they have particular allelopathic chemicals in them. And when we talk about the dusky-footed wood rat, well, there's another nice little critter. I know maybe, maybe it doesn't seem very important. It's just a rat the size of your foot. It doesn't sound very nice, but they're a pretty cool species. They live in families, and they actually have rooms in their houses, just like you and I do. They ferment their own food and get drunk off of it. They have separate bathrooms and living rooms. And, and the reason you see so many in a cluster is that they live in family groups. So, the idea of relocating them seems a bit unfair to oust an entire family of related species from their homes. I heard that they're going to mitigate that and plant, plant trees elsewhere, so I, I just want to speak up and say that I hope that they are native species. I hope they're located nearby, and I hope they really consider the impact that moving keystone species and family groups have on everything else in that canyon, and all the ways that they're interconnected in hydrology, chemistry, everything. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter tonight? All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mary Roselli?
Yes. All right. Mr. Johnston?
I wanted to ask a question of staff. I was somewhat persuaded by the gentleman's comments about the gate, and so I was wondering if I could get a little bit of history about the settlement agreement and what, how, I heard the, in the presentation, the comment that this was an agreement with neighbors because there was a concern about more traffic in a particular section of road. But if you could just give me a little bit of color, and also, what would be entailed in revisiting that particular part of the agreement?
I think that's probably a question to me, Councilmember Johnson.
That's fine.
The lawsuit that was filed against the city back in 2003, 2004, one of the claims was that the, in addition to the bush mallow and the dusky-footed wood rat, was that there was a generalized traffic concern that the, the plaintiffs in the case pursued, saying that the gate was important so that it wouldn't become a through road. But they, but the settlement agreement recognizes that the gate would have to be available for fire access, and it restricts it to pedestrian only, and I think that was, as I recall, let me put it that way, that was to preserve the status quo that existed then, and there was a gate that was locked, and pedestrians walked around the gate, even though the gate extends across the whole existing roadway, so that pedestrians could continue to walk through that, through the canyon even after the homes are built. One of the other constraints in the settlement agreement that really hasn't been discussed as much is the roadway width was actually agreed to, and that was also a traffic-related issue that was brought up by the plaintiffs in the case. So, the roadway width was no more than, than 18 feet, which is designed to kind of allow two cars to pass slowly past each other, but not, not, because it has a 50-foot right-of-way as it was constructed. So, that's actually a very wide roadway that theoretically could have been built. So, those two things together were the issues that drove, were driving the part of the lawsuit. So, the city agreed to do these things and have these restrictions. So, what you're seeing tonight is this 18-foot-wide paved surface, and because of fire department requirements, we have the three-foot-wide path, which is also part of the settlement agreement, and it's compacted to, you know, crushed granite or crushed gravel. It'll be, it'll have the standards to be able to accommodate a fire truck. And then, as I said earlier, the gate's necessary so that the fire vehicles, when they're out on patrol, especially in high-fire danger times, they have a way to go through and don't have to, with their bigger, larger vehicles, have to turn around. They can just go straight through, because they have to patrol the whole area anyway, so they, they want to have access to go through. The settlement agreement, when I analyze the settlement agreement, and I think this is part of your question, it's pretty explicit that it says pedestrian access only, and if we allowed residents to have keys, I felt that we would have, there'd be a problem with the explicit language in the settlement agreement, and then there'd be a practical consideration. Well, how far down Winding Way will we, and will we allow people to have keys if we're gonna allow keys for emergency purposes? And I felt that, that not only wasn't, wasn't it contemplated, it created some logistical problems, fire department, public works, whoever would be controlling this. So, I'm hoping I'm answering some of the history of this.
So, it's not a question of access through the gate, it's about the question of the, the existence of the gate in general. And, and what I would say is that this is a section of road that is not going to be widely used, but I, I, as one council member, don't like the idea of putting gates up on public roads, so it's more of a question about setting the precedent. And so, I guess the question is, is that a concern, and is, is this something that can be revisited, or is it something that was essentially agreed to and is, it is very logistically difficult to do so at this time?
Yeah. So, the first question is, the gate, this is different than some other situations in town, because the gate is at the, at or near where the city limits end. So, on the other side of the fence, it may not be the precise, or the gate at the precise place, it's the county's road, not the city's road.
I see.
And there are other places where that happens, where the county road ends, and that, and there's a fence, or a gate, or, or some sort of obstruction. To unwind this, you know, I hadn't thought about it too much before tonight, but to unwind it, I think it would take, if, if the basis for unwinding it is a claim that the subdivision entitles the parties to access it, well, that is a claim that could be made. I don't, I can't comment it any further. I suppose that's a claim that could be made. The, the, the settlement agreement could be, you know, somebody could go to court to try and invalidate the settlement agreement by saying that it violated our, the rights to passage, and I think that would probably be one theory. I don't know how successful it would be, given that it's, it's at the border and it's, you know, the sub, this action is a subsequent action that the city took in the annexation, so the annexation might act as a cutoff of the rights for, under the subdivision. And keep in mind, part of this application was a series of lot line adjustments that changed the configuration of the lots and substantially reduced the number of lots. So, I don't know where that goes in, but, but it's definitely a factual issue on how this works. So, there probably is a way to do it, but it's not something without direction that the city would undertake.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Just to follow up on those, if I might, Craig. So, if I heard you correctly, what you're saying is, where Winding Way will meet the gate, once you go on the other side of the gate, past this subdivision, you're in the county. So, it's not any different than what we have on Crestview with Belmont, where you get on the other side, and it's a different street name and everything, but it's the same street, but there's a block, not even a gate, there's absolute blockage.
Yeah, there's, there's another place that, that's similar to that, and there's another place in Palomar Park that I'm, where Pebble Drive goes in, where there's actually, the right-of-ways actually connect, and there's a, city limit ends, county road begins, and there's a barricade there. And so, we do have other places that are like this.
And just a last question to make sure I heard you correctly. If, if somebody such as this gentleman, or his neighbors, along with him, wanted to make an issue out of this, even after the development has taken place, they're free to do so.
You know, I, it, it's hard for me to, to give legal advice, but I'm, I'm saying that there may be a way that it could happen.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Bob. Just had a question. There was one comment, the gentleman who was talking about the gate, made reference to an assertion, or made an assertion that, about a city policy that I was not familiar with, so I wanted to educate myself about that first, and then see how it might apply here. And that was the assertion that the city rules either do not allow or strongly discourage dead-end streets without turnarounds?
I think the gentleman was referring to the comment I had made earlier, that the fire department wants the streets, wants access to go through the streets so they don't have to turn around and generate, and create a turn, mandate a turnaround on the site. So, this is the solution that was recognized from the beginning, that the gate is important because it was there, that that's what the fire department has always wanted to be able to get through.
I think I'm asking a somewhat different question, which I just want to make sure I understand. So, that ties back to the fire department, fire safety. I guess what I'm asking is, is there a separate goal, aspiration, whatever you want to call it, in the city policy that says, just in general, for any kind of vehicular traffic, if it's not a through road, it shouldn't just end, there should be a turnaround.
That's probably not my, the question that, for me, it's probably a planning or, or engineering department question.
I was actually surprised that you leaped in to answer it. I was expecting one of them to do it.
Well, I was, I was thinking it was that earlier, response to my earlier comments.
I understand.
Hi, Gareth Harris, your fire marshal. Perhaps I can address that issue. It's actually a code issue, a fire code issue, which is part of our municipal code, because we've adopted the California Fire Code. And so, the code says dead-end streets greater than 150 feet in length have to have a provision for the turning around of fire apparatus. And so, the idea of a dead-end street would require a very large turnaround, a turnaround of largest vehicles about 60 feet long. And so, the idea being, if it's considered a through street, in other words, the fire department can gain access through the gate, then it's considered a through street, and then it wouldn't need the fire apparatus turnaround at the end. So, it's not that the fire code prevents dead-end streets, it's just that there needs to be a provision, which is a lot of real estate in... a provision, which is a lot of real estate in order to turn around the vehicles.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm going to direct this question now to Jeff, because nobody has yet picked up on what I thought I had said pretty clearly is, I'd like to know if there is another provision, if there's a provision in the city code, not related to Fire Department, that says there's not supposed to be dead-end streets. Because that was the assertion that was made by the gentleman, and I'm just curious about whether it actually exists. Somebody ought to know the answer to that question.
Unless there's a provision in the general plan, which I'm not, I don't recall and am familiar with, I think we're probably talking about the municipal code, which is the fire code.
So there's nothing beyond that? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only, as our Fire Marshal described, that's exactly how I've always understood the issue of courts.
I get that logic, and I get how the gate substitutes for that. But that was not what the assertion was, and that the assertion was what I was trying to test, because had it been there, I was going to suggest, why don't we put a turnaround in it? But I won't, because it's not in the code. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my only question is for Greg. There was a comment that the residents were not a party to the settlement agreement of 2004. And in the presentation, it said that the settlement agreement was the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance, and who? The city?
The city was the defendant, along with the developer in the case. So since the city was, is the responsible agency for doing the environmental review, the city becomes a party. We go to the developer under the indemnity provisions of our municipal code, that in essence brings the developer into the case. The Devonshire Open Space Alliance, Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance, was a group of citizens who were the plaintiffs.
Were they residents of the area, or just?
Residents of the area. And I don't, I can't tell you where, which homes or parcels or properties that the residents lived in, but they were in the, all around the general vicinity of this project.
All right. So we can reasonably assume that the residents who were part of that are potentially many of the residents that are close to this area now?
Yes. Some of the same people still live in the area. And Mr. Schre, who wrote a letter earlier at the Planning Commission level, was, he was one of the parties in that group. But like you're right, right now, tonight, I can't tell you who the list of people were and where they lived.
That's all right. I just wanted a little clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, one more question. So when we get to this part about parking on the curved portion, I'd like to get to that. But just a question for now, the developer made in his presentation, gave the idea that occasionally, on occasion, they will need to park at the, near the entrance of their site, which would be the paved portion of this street that we're talking about. My question is, I'm thinking this might be for the Building Department. I see one of our staff back there with the Building Department. I don't know if he's here officially or just watching, but I'm thinking, regardless of how much we tighten up that language, for instance, right across the street from my house, a building was put up, and they brought in a crane, and they pretty much closed down the street while they put in these panels. So it seems to me, and that was, you know, the provision for that, I think, went through Chris Valley, our chief building official. So it seems to me, regardless of what kind of language you put in there, that it's impossible to prevent some type of action that might take place on occurrence with a notice, with permission from the Building Department. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess that might be getting into more of the legal realm, or the building official, in terms of what the implications are if they don't comply with these conditions. Yeah, with the ramifications.
We do have some remedies if a condition isn't complied with. We can stop the project until they comply. The other...
But I'm sorry, Greg, more my question was, regardless of what kind of language we put in there, the building official does have some, he has leeway, or Al Sovey, the Community Development Director, has a leeway to give permission to a development to close down a street for a period of time. So if they can close down a street, certainly they can allow parking for a certain amount of time as well.
Right. I think that what you're talking about, if I'm understanding you, is the encroachment permit process. So when a street is closed, Public Works, the Public Works Director, an application can be made to encroach on the right-of-way. And I suppose, separate from this project, someone could do that. But I think that that would be part of the analysis. Well, wait a minute, there's a condition of approval that you can't park in the right-of-way here. I think the picture that was passed out, just to be clear, involving this parking issue, is the entrance at the lower end on Chesum, where the developer was saying that occasionally that area might have parking. And I'm interpreting that as to be along the frontage of their property, that where they might need to temporarily park during the construction period. But that is off the public right-of-way, or off the paved portion of the street, is what I think.
It's on their property.
It's on their property, or off the street and not blocking the street, which I think is the intention.
So if council adopts the language that you brought up earlier, it still would allow them to park on their own property?
On their own property, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more questions. So, gentlemen, what would you like to do on this?
Want a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018...
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, finding at the Certified Final Focused Environmental Impact Report, FFEIR, for the Winding Way Project, S H number 2005-062052, and addendum, adequately analyze environmental impacts associated with the Winding Way Project, APNs 049-020-010, and 049-141-660-670-680, and -690, and adopting the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Next item, next resolution? Is there a motion?
No, because I can't read. I thought Mr. Olbert was on a roll there.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018...
Eighty-seven.
I guessed that. Eighty-seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving the master development plan, lot line adjustment, and tree removal applications for the Winding Way Project, APN 049-020-010, and 049-1-141-660-670-680, and -690. And Greg, can I put in, and as amended, to reflect Greg Rubin's comments about restricting parking both on and along the roadway?
Yeah, that's in the record, it's on the tape. I think we can draft an amended condition to number 16 to this resolution. It's condition 16.
Okay.
I second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, summarily vacating three segments of the Winding Way right-of-way easement.
I second. Moved and seconded. Mr. Collins, question, discussion?
Just a comment. This project's taken a long time. I want to commend the developer for their patience and perseverance. It's been quite a while, predates all of our, well, most of our times on the council.
Not all of us.
Most of our times.
Some of us are old.
Well, and we got old working on this project.
But I've had a lot of, over the years, a lot of calls and emails from people dissatisfied that, you know, the Planning Department, or the Public Works Department, or the city engineer was too strict, too onerous, rules and hurdles that they had to get by, that they thought were just too difficult. And we have a situation here where, you know, all of those hurdles have been passed, the city engineer's passed on it. So I am, you know, if the city engineer, which, you know, our engineering and public works departments are, they're no pushovers. And if they're satisfied with this project, that's enough for me. And then just a final comment, I know that there's, there are some concerned neighbors, and I would just say to Mr. Grove and the other developers that, you know, just be respectful of the owners and where you park and how you run your project. I know you already know that, but the reason I mention it is that when there is a violation, or even a perceived violation, guess who they write first? All of us. You know, sometimes they call the city, but lots of times, we get the emails. So that would be really my only comment. Otherwise, I think everyone's done a great job in getting this project before us.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right. That item is done. Thank you. Folks want to leave? It'll take a couple of minutes, or a minute.
Anytime I want to get something done, I have a call. I'm seriously, I remember, I would think, didn't we rock it before 2000?
... Inc., to purchase and install mobile automated license plate readers, ALPRs, ALPRs, on 10 patrol vehicles and two parking vehicles in a total amount of $200,556.50, and appropriate $210,000 for this purpose. Chief?
Good evening, everyone, mayor, city council, and staff, Chief Mark Dury. And I'm here to request you consider and adopt the resolution to purchase mobile ALPR readers for 10 of our patrol vehicles and two of our CSO parking enforcement vehicles. As you know, what we use the ALPRs for is to locate stolen and wanted vehicles and subjects that we're trying to investigate, and locate and apprehend individuals and subjects to arrest warrants and otherwise lawfully sought by law enforcement. We also locate witnesses and victims of violent crimes, and it's also utilized to locate missing persons and subjects that are involved in any kind of Amber Alert. As you know, that we have nine fixed ALPR systems throughout the city, and I'm proposing again to mobilize this ALPR technology in our patrol vehicles and CSO vehicles. I know in my staff report, I've delineated various successes we've had, but I also have a few more that I'd like to tell you about tonight. One case, it was a burglary and a brandishing. There was a burglary over off of Airport in Skyway Drive. As the burglars finished burglarizing various vehicles on the way out, they brandished a few witnesses, threatened them that if they called police, that they'll be back for them. Based on the description of the vehicle that the witness, that we got from the witnesses, because they did call us, even though they were threatened not to, we were able to get the vehicle description and license plate. Based on what they gave us, we were able to utilize the ALPR system to find a vehicle out of the Central Valley. Because of the burglary and the weapon that was used, we sent our crime suppression unit down to do some reconnaissance and surveillance. They spent a day or so down there where the vehicle was registered to, and they did not find the vehicle, or they did not find the suspect matching the description. They were able to find a description of the registered owner of the vehicle through a CAL photo ID, and when that individual left in a different vehicle, they affected a traffic stop and contacted that subject. It was not the subject we were looking for, but lo and behold, through the interviews, they were able to find that that subject had sold that vehicle to someone in San Leandro. Based on the information we got from that subject, and the information we got on who he sold the vehicle to, we were able to locate the subject we believed committed that crime. Based on a photo lineup with all the witnesses in place, they identified the exact suspect that committed that burglary, who that gentleman sold the vehicle to. Based on the ALPR technology, we were able to solve that crime based on our investigation and the information at hand. That's one story. Another story is a burglary over off of laser quest. Subject burglarized two vehicles, and after the burglary occurred, we got a description of the vehicle, and it was a stolen vehicle that was registered, or that was a stolen vehicle that we were able to tie to this subject. The subject had the vehicle for two, three days. We encountered the suspect on various occasions, tried to pursue him, we couldn't pursue him, we had to let him go because of our vehicle pursuit policy. So we turned this over to our crime suppression unit, and based on the stolen vehicle and who stole it, and who were able to identify who had the vehicle, the subject, based on his prior contacts, was deemed as armed and dangerous. And they were able to locate him days later in San Mateo. As they approached the vehicle, knowing that the subject was armed and dangerous, as they approached on both sides, the suspect went for his waistband and had a firearm in his waistband. As the deputy approached on one side, he drew down on him, and the other deputy was able to go in the window and apprehend the suspect and take the little weapon out of his waistband, and he was taken into custody for the stolen vehicle and both the burglaries, again, identified because of the ALPR system. And there's one more, actually, a good one, that, out of Redwood City, that's recently, that was recent in the news. In the middle of last month, the Redwood City Police Department responded to an in-progress domestic violence. When they arrived, the victim was there, was beaten by her boyfriend, and the boyfriend had left. After further investigation with the Redwood City detectives, the victim confided that she had been working as a prostitute for about a month for the suspect, who was actually her boyfriend as well. As a means of control and enslavement, the suspect kept the victim and her money and her cellphone and purse and her identification, and denied her food, and made her sleep in her car. On the night she was contacted by the Redwood City Police when the domestic violence occurred, the suspect, again, as I indicated before, beat her and stole all her possessions. They took all the information of the vehicle and the suspect, and they put it in the ALPR system. Days later, officers in Merced Police Department stopped the suspect in their city after receiving a hit on their mobile automated license plate readers, and from the information that Redwood City put into the system. The street crime suppression team responded for Redwood City, and went down to Merced and identified the suspect. And the suspect was subsequently arrested and booked in the San Mateo County Jail for human trafficking, pimping, pandering, robbery, domestic violence, extortion, and assault. Another victory for the ALPRs, and this one is actually a mobile ALPR. And we are also currently working on another In-N-Out burglary, In-N-Out Burger, where we have identified a suspect via ALPR hit. We're very successful with our fixed systems, we'll even be more successful with our mobile systems, if approved. What I can say really about the ALPR systems here and within San Mateo County, even Northern California, based on what we've done, and based really on your vision and leadership, the city council here, and the city manager, and just the city of San Carlos, and embarking on the fixed systems, I think we can make that much more headway in stopping crime in this city and in San Mateo County and abroad with these mobile systems as well. And I'm going to leave you with this. This also meets the public safety and strategic goals outlined in the city of San Carlos 2018 strategic plan. So we have been planning for these mobile ALPRs for a little while now, and we're ready to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Chief. Just a couple of questions. I always get both confused and a little bit concerned with the ability, who has the ability to access the data that gets generated from this equipment? And I know that once, my understanding is, once the data gets into the regional center, it's very difficult for anybody who's not, A, a law enforcement officer, and B, somebody who, you know, an active investigation of some kind, to get access to it.
That's correct.
But I keep reading articles about purported deals that, I guess, the hardware vendor, Vigilant, has made with other parties, where it may be that the data sort of gets siphoned off before it gets into the control network, the controlled network that I was just describing. Do you have any insight to shed on that? Or I don't necessarily give... Or, I don't necessarily give a high degree of credibility to the things I read, but I read an awful lot of them.
No. We don't have any of those kind of issues. It's very strict. You have to be trained on the system and to utilize the system, and we can only draw information, license plates or anything that are in the system. We can't. We don't really have any kind of, kind of tracking capability where we're tracking people. We can put information in, and if something comes about, we can draw it out if there's a hit, but it's just really a data collection tool that is second to none.
I think I maybe, I may have confused, I may be asking a slightly different question, and you may not have the answer tonight, in which case, I'd just like to follow up with you. But what I'm really asking is, you were describing the proper constraints about accessing the data from the warehouse, once it's there. What I'm really asking is, since the hardware is coming from this third-party company called Vigilant, is it possible, does the data, when it comes out of the device in the car, does it go through their servers on the way to, to the, I see Kate's shaking her head, yes. Does it go through their servers on the way to the controlled warehouse that you were describing the limited access to? And if so, do they have the ability to sort of say, well, we're going to cut a deal with some other agency and sort of siphon that data off and let them look at it?
I don't believe that's the case, but I would have to look into it more on that scope to give you more definitive answer.
Let's follow up on that. We can do that offline. I mean, unless anybody else is interested. Because I am concerned about that, because I want to make sure that I have, I do have issues about the length of time for which we are storing the data, but I have less issues with properly vetted and regulated law enforcement people using data than I do some third-party organization.
Okay.
I noticed that the proposal here also covers installing some of the mobile units in the parking, in at least a couple of parking enforcement vehicles?
Yes.
Is that going to be used to be able to track people who are parking too long in places, or is it just that you're using them as, well, those vehicles are going around too, so we want to use them as a mobile platform?
Just a mobile platform. Those cameras will be pointed, obviously, to the right on how they enforce parking, and it just is another data collection platform for us. They won't be tracking anyone for parking, or we don't really track anyone. It's really a data collection system that we draw information out, being timely, and putting different vehicles in different places.
Okay. I wouldn't, by the way, personally, I wouldn't necessarily have had a problem if you were going to use it for parking enforcement. I'm just curious if that's what you're going to do.
Understood.
And then, the last thing, which is probably more of a comment than a question, was I correct in, am I correct in hearing that some of the examples you were giving us of where the systems were being used were crimes that were resolved that were outside of San Carlos? In other words, that were using automated license plate reader like Redwood City?
Yes. Redwood City, well, Redwood City, that was a mobile automated license plate reader out of Merced. They entered their plate in the system as a wanted, and he was driving through Merced, and the ALPR picked it up and dinged in the car, and it said, hey, that's a wanted car here, and then they affected the traffic stop.
In Merced?
In Merced.
Okay. For what it's worth, for me, one of the things that I look at in these kind of expenditures is the return we're getting for our investment, and so, for me, the more valuable to figure that out uses are what your guys are using them for, to solve issues in San Carlos. It's not that I object to using, you know, information, it's just that I'm not really looking at investing in general in automated license plate readers, I'm investing in them in San Carlos, so.
Well, all the other examples I gave you were in San Carlos?
So, it was just that one?
It was just that one.
Okay.
That's a recent mobile one that shows you that if a crime occurred, if that crime would have occurred in San Carlos, in that gentleman.
You could have picked him up in Merced.
We could have picked him up in Merced. I was just giving you kind of, I was giving you kind of the in-house version here, the first examples, and to show kind of where the reach for ALPR is and the solvability of crimes because of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
I'm curious about the difference between how these cameras get used when they're on a vehicle, a patrol vehicle, versus the stationary ones, and perhaps even the, you're mentioning about the parking enforcement vehicles, I take it that would be like the little carts that run around?
Yeah, they call them the gophers.
Yeah. So, if you could...
How would they?
Yeah, how do they use differently? Because let me just give you the background of my question is, for me, I, as you may know, I'm really troubled by license plate readers that are just picking up people who are driving around, or what you just answered, Mr. Olbert, with, it seems to me even a parking enforcement vehicle that is just passing by, and it's picking up, you know, all these people that are parked at Williams Plaza or wherever in San Carlos. That, to me, is an infringement on people's right to privacy. When it's on a vehicle, and this is my interpretation of it, so this is what I'm looking for clarification on, a police officer is, or a sheriff's deputy is following a vehicle on El Camino, and I've seen them do this. They follow along for a little while, they read the license plate, you can tell they're punching it in, they're getting information on that vehicle, and if there's any reason because of the information that comes back to make a stop, they will. But they don't always, you know, they don't necessarily stop the vehicle. There's, a lot of times, they run a plate and it's all clear, so they just move on. But I know, I'm pretty sure that gets done. You can clarify that for me? I could see that the, where perhaps these readers on a vehicle can lessen the time that it takes a deputy or a police officer to go through the machinations. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay. The first part of your question is yes, is a deputy, the deputy has the authority to type in a license plate number and bring it up on their screen, or to radio it in, and they'll get it verbally from the dispatcher. What ALPRs do, it just collects data. It doesn't bring anything up on a screen. He'll physically have to go in to, if he's looking for a certain license plate, to bring that out. So, what this is doing is just collecting data and putting it in a system. So, the way it would work on a patrol vehicle, it'll have a camera going forward and backwards, so it could, it could collect a license plate going from the front and the back. And if, two months down the line, we find out there's a crime in San Carlos and this vehicle was involved, we can punch in the license plate, and this, we can put that vehicle here, because that, it's been collected. Just because it's collecting all this data, we don't look at all this data, we try to extract the data if it's there when we're trying to solve a crime. So, it's not really a Big Brother aspect, it's just a data collection tool that helps us pinpoint where the suspects are, or where they're not, or they said, hey, I wasn't in San Carlos at the time, I was over here, and we can prove that you are, because we can place the vehicle here. So, it's just a data collection tool. It's similar, your questions are similar, but we're not running every plate or checking every plate.
But isn't it true also, though, you can place the vehicle, but almost in the, I think this was in the example you gave, you were able to place the vehicle, but you weren't able to place necessarily who was driving the vehicle? And I think of a situation, for example, where, little story here, I'm riding my bike on Woodside Road, and there's four guys in a car go by me, and one of them whips out a towel, I guess they'd been swimming or something, and whacks me in the back of the helmet. I chased down the car, got a description near Robert's store, and then called it into the Sheriff's Department when I, you know, was able to. They tracked these guys down in East Palo Alto. They had me get in the sheriff's vehicle, go over there, they had the guy sitting on, all the guys sitting on the curb, but because I couldn't identify the one that whacked me with towel, it was no deal. So, kind of a similar thing. You have to be able to put that person in the vehicle, not just the vehicle.
That's true, and that goes on, but it is still an investigative tool, and that's why I use that scenario on, we got the car, and it was registered to a certain person, and we couldn't place them together, but based on the further investigation, we were able to find him, that he sold it to someone else who didn't register it to himself, and based on the photo lineup that we used from the second person we located, based on the interview of the original car owner, we were able to pinpoint him out of, we call it a six-pack. We generally provide witnesses or victims with six photos, and they have to select the person, sort of like you did.
Yeah.
And out of six, both people selected the correct person.
Okay. And then, last question, similar to what Mr. Olbert was asking, is there, when the information is going from the camera in the police vehicle, or whether it's stationary or whatever, it has to go through some kind of pipeline? Is there any guarantee that we can have that, as it's going from the vehicle into the data center, that somebody isn't able to hack it, siphon it off, so forth?
I can give you the same guarantee that we gave you when we, you authorized the fixed ones. That's what Vigilant has guaranteed, is that it's secure.
Vigilant has guaranteed that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any more questions, Chief. We do have one speaker card, though. Kate Pfaff?
Thank you, honorable members of the council. I strongly urge you not to expand the use of automated license plate readers in the city of San Carlos. I spoke to you not long ago, I think it was in March, about my concerns over privacy, police overreach, fraudulent use, and the potential misuse of such broad data collection on the lives of innocent private citizens. At that time, you chose to expand the number of ALPRs then, and lengthen the data retention policy to a year. Since then, as well, Vigilant Solutions has now signed a contract with ICE for data access nationwide, and I ask you to consider that change since what happened at the meeting in March. So, the privacy concerns have only increased since the last time this was considered. And now, the sheriff's office is asking for more mobile ALPRs at a cost of $200,000. And in reviewing the strategic plan, I see there's even a call for potentially equipping every city vehicle, including non-law enforcement vehicles, with the power of mass public surveillance on our movements. And I say enough is enough. So, let's look at the numbers, and my numbers here are coming from a Portola Valley report, staff report that was online on ALPRs from 2017 that they did. So, in the city of San Mateo, two patrol cars with ALPRs in a 12-hour shift collected over 10,000 images. We have nine ALPRs in the city already for 30,000 people, and that's a capacity to collect 90,000 license plate images a day in a city of 30,000. So, I would think that the sheriff has the tools that he needs to monitor people from outside of town through the fixed ALPRs at locations at the margins of the city. He has mobile units that can be deployed to targeted areas where crimes are being committed, as he has previously mentioned. So, what can be the possible justification for a dozen more devices on top of 90,000 plates a day? When does it stop? When you've achieved total information awareness on every citizen's movement? I also object to the staff report being written by the police captain who's asking for the funding instead of being an unbiased staff opinion. For instance, the staff report states that the ACLU was wildly enthusiastic about the policy, and even included a quote. But at our last meeting in March, when the policy changed and the data retention policy changed, the ACLU was not happy at all about the expanding data retention, and again, the ICE contract that's happened since then. In addition, this policy, whatever the city's policy is, has now disappeared from public view. It's not on the city's website as required by the SB 34 law. It's not on the county sheriff's website, which links to the NICRIC policy, but not the county's own data retention and privacy policy. So, a police force that is unable to currently comply with privacy laws on ALPRs would like us to pay $200,000 to expand their ability to watch our every move and expand even more in the future. So, no, thank you. Here's what I suggest instead.
Could you wrap it up, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Here's what I suggest instead. The actual studies have shown that increased patrols, especially slow patrols, are as effective as ALPRs in deterring crime and catching property crime. In the six years of living on Cordilleras Avenue here in the city, I'm not sure I've ever seen a police car on slow patrol, and I live near a school on a fairly decent-sized road. So, for $200,000, you could pay for additional police patrols and increase the human intelligence of our police force instead of the raw AI. In wrapping up, yes, you should be concerned about Vigilant. You should ask why they're charging many people for, like, their business model is to both get money from you for collecting data and then charging other people to access that data, so they're making money coming and going, and you should be concerned that all the data is passing through their server and is hackable. Yes.
Ma'am, I'm going to really have to ask you to stop. I mean, you've already gone over two minutes already. You've now spoken for five minutes. Okay?
Well, I'd like a citizen panel to have some oversight over the increasing police surveillance in this city.
You have a citizen, right here. We're all five citizens, okay? We got elected, and that's what our job is to, okay?
Other cities have decided to do a lot more.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. What do you gentlemen want to do?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jeff or Chief Derry? What is SB 34? She mentioned something about an SB 34 violation. Does anybody know what that is?
I would have to look that up. I don't.
All right. That was really all I wanted to know. All right.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Is ours posted?
I don't know if it's on the website, but our Lexipol policy is public information, and our ALPR policy is in that.
Thank you. All right.
I know ours was, but with the recent cut over to the new website, I'll have to verify with staff that that was properly cut over. If it's not, it will be.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Mayor, you looking for a motion?
Yeah, or something.
All right. I move to adopt Resolution 2018-...
89.
89. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Vigilant Solutions LLC and Priory One Public Safety Equipment Installation, Inc., to purchase and install mobile automated license plate readers, ALPRs, on 10 patrol vehicles and two parking vehicles in the total amount of $200,556.50, and appropriate $210,000 for this purpose.
Any second? All right. Moved in second. The only thing I'd like to say is, Chief, I think it is a good question, and I'm sure you'll get it from Mr. Olbert, that you could maybe get the answer to all of us about Vigilant, about, you know, if it goes off the side-five line, or just goes straight through, that'd be great.
I'll get that for you tomorrow.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it, Chief. All right. Anything else?
Yes, and by the way, I wasn't trying to cut the rest of you guys out, I just wasn't sure if you were interested. I know I was, so.
Fine.
I'm going to be voting against this, and, but I want to make clear that I very much support what the chief is trying to do in terms of keeping the community safe. I'm not too concerned about the cost-effectiveness issue of it. I'm not, I'm not happy about the data being stored for more than six months, which is what the original compromise was, but, you know, that's why there were five of us. But I do have sort of an increasing level of concern and questions just about all the stuff I read about Vigilant and their role here, because they are not you, Chief. I mean, I respect you and the rules that you and the Sheriff's Department follow, but they're somebody else, and they don't necessarily have to follow our rules. So, that's why I'm going to be voting against this. Thank you.
All right. All right. We've got, Mr. Collins, you have another comment?
Yeah, just a final comment. The reason I'm supporting this is that this really comes down to a matter of trust. We've had this discussion now for, I believe, three years, and they've been in practice. I haven't seen it abused. If it was ever abused in our area, I think we'd find out, and we could do something about it. So, as long as that trust factor is there, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right. Moving on. 8B. Consideration of adopting a resolution accepting $6 million from Pacific Gas &amp; Electric, PG&E, arising out of a settlement agreement approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC. Is there a report on this?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor, and we'll make it a quick report, just for sake of the public. We'll provide a brief overview of the history with Line 147, which began just about five years ago next month, when the city was notified that a leak had occurred and been repaired on Line 147, which the city and the CPUC at the time were not properly notified of. When that came to light, PG&E was in the process of turning over a whole number of emails to the CPUC, and they wanted to bring to our attention that that issue had happened, and in the correspondence following the issue, that there were concerns expressed by PG&E engineers that potentially Line 147 could be another... be another San Bruno situation. And when that information was shared with me, I was very concerned. Our public works director was there afterwards. As you might imagine, we had a number of questions for the PG&E folks that were making that presentation. And those questions weren't answered to our satisfaction. They led to a number of other questions. And what we tried to do at the staff level was quickly escalate our requests up the chain of command at PG&E to higher and higher level officials requesting simply that they temporarily shut the line down until they could explain to the city council what was done to the line to resolve the concerns of the engineers and that we were no longer considered to be a potential San Bruno situation with Line 147. PG&E unfortunately refused, and I notified the council that I was gonna be declaring a state of emergency and asked that the council convene a special meeting of the city council to consider ratifying my decision, which the five of you did the following day. After that, our city attorney was able to get a court order that PG&E did comply with. The line was shut down for quite a long time, while a number of improvements were made to the line. As you recall, the line didn't have the capability at the time of being PIGD, which is the nickname for the inspection probe that's put through the line. So PG&E began improving the infrastructure on both ends so that they could both launch and receive a PIG in the future in the pipeline. They also had to make a number of pipeline section modifications so that the PIG could navigate some of the twists and turns that were too tight for the probe at that time. This took well over a year once they started to complete. And then they were using new technology, I believe out of Germany, to PIG the line. The first probe was unsuccessful in providing scanning data and ultimately didn't survive the testing process, as I understand it. The second PIG was successful, and the line was tested. That testing resulted in over a dozen deficiencies in the pipe being identified and ultimately repaired and improved to our satisfaction and the satisfaction of experts that we had worked with to provide third-party review of the data. Once that was all completed and those repairs were eventually made, the city agreed and the CPUC agreed, and last year, the line began to operate at its allowed capacity again. Along the way, PG&E incurred a number of legal issues and a number of fines, which our city attorney, working with outside legal counsel, has been very successful in addressing. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Greg for a quick briefing on that.
Well, I'll fill in some of the details about the legal remedies that we pursued against PG&E at the beginning and more recently. So in, at the beginning of the process, as Jeff said, we took the issue of these emails extremely seriously and took strong action, as we felt we needed to do to get the attention of the CPUC and PG&E, that we took this leak that they failed to notify us very seriously, and we expected them to comply with our request, which we felt was very reasonable at the time. You know, it was in the fall, and the arguments that they were making about there not being enough gas didn't seem to resonate at all in October of 2013, when we weren't in cold weather season yet. So again, they refused to do that, so we took legal action, and I was successful in obtaining a restraining order to get the line to be depressurized in a safe manner. So segue to the future. Jeff covered some of the fines and disciplinary actions undertaken by the CPUC arising out of some of that conduct. But in 2015, the CPUC, after San Bruno was successful in obtaining some public records, which included emails related to our proceedings before the CPUC, issued an OSC, in order to show cause, why the PG&E should not be fined for these emails that were violations of the CPUC rules. So that was the more recent activity that led to the negotiation of and the settlement agreement that the council approved earlier in the year that provided for $97.5 million in financial penalties to PG&E and some non-financial penalties involving disclosure of contacts that are more stringent than the CPUC rules, and the $6 million to the city's general fund, which was designed to punish PG&E for the conduct and to compensate the city for the, what we went through, frankly, and the costs that we incurred in defending ourselves and representing the citizens. So the city, the interesting part of the legal analysis is that the city, under the CPUC rules, the only way a city can receive what's called intervenor compensation is when the city has physical damage to its residents or its infrastructure. And luckily for San Carlos, even though the line did have, as Jeff mentioned, several defects that were uncovered later in the process, we didn't have physical damage from the pipeline. So we probably, the CPUC would have been, it would have been very difficult to, if we went to hearing at the CPUC, to get any kind of compensation, even to reimburse us for the substantial costs that we had and that were incurred, basically at PG&E's request. So the settlement was very advantageous to the city because it enabled us to receive the settlement funds and which were, which the CPUC ultimately awarded when they approved the settlement. But that was a legal question that we had some concerns about through this process. So tonight, what we're at from a legal standpoint, to kind of make a conclusion to the acceptance of the $6 million, there is a government code section that requires the city to accept personal property. And so we wanted to make sure that the record reflected that, yes, we have formally accepted it, even though there's a signed settlement agreement. It just seemed like a loose issue there that we wanted to make sure we had in the record in a resolution of doing that. So legally, that's what you're doing tonight. You're accepting the $6 million.
And just in conclusion, a couple more comments. One, the council's given us previous direction on what to do with the money. $1 million is to be put into the city's Affordable Housing Fund. $2 million is to be set aside for a potential future grant to a local community foundation nonprofit serving San Carlos, and $3 million to go towards the Holly 101 pedestrian and intersection project that we'll be starting construction here next year. I was very proud to work with the city council on this issue. I hope not to have another issue quite like this in my career. It was difficult. I think our staff really, really rose the occasion. We were very much in the public spotlight for quite a while. I think the council did a great job and was very thoughtful in their approach. It's my opinion that it's really never a good idea to enter into a legal dispute with another governmental agency or quasi-governmental agency, if it can be avoided, because you're spending public money on both sides of the equation, and a utility is a quasi-public entity. But unfortunately, you know, our request for a reasonable answer and a reasonable solution to the problem relative to the threat that was potentially being proposed by their own staff just sort of forced our hand in this instance. You broke a lot of new ground in the state of California in your actions as a council. I think you've improved safety considerably for millions of people in the state of California. And you have, I think, as much as any other entity in the state of California, forced PG&E to live up to what they've been saying about their commitment to safety. And hopefully in the future, rather than having to spend money on fines and penalties, they can spend that money on improving infrastructure and doing the proper testing and maintenance along the way. Because at the end of the day, we would much rather just see that happen in the future than a repeat of what we went through for the last five years. So thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malpe. Mr. Rubens? Mr. Olbert, do you have a comment?
Actually, I had a question. But I'll add a comment in the beginning, saying, yes, thank you, Greg, for all your hard work on this, and Jeff as well. And I will never forget the scene up at the first meeting we had with PG&E senior management, when I was there with vice mayor, and I was there with Mayor Bob, because Bob's always been mayor. Everything happens when Bob's mayor. And that was, that was a, do you remember that meeting? That was a very strange meeting.
I remember that meeting.
I thought at one point you were gonna go over the table at the guy. But, and justifiably so, I should add. My question, actually, it does relate to Line 147. I think we all got some emails about some, an individual who has a right-of-way where Line 147 goes through his residential property, and he had some questions about, concerns about trees that PG&E was asking him to remove. And I met with him, along with Jeff and a number of the senior staff members. And in the course of that conversation, the homeowner mentioned that someplace up the hill behind him, Line 147, had kind of eroded out of the ground. And so my question is, do we have any updates on what's going on with that?
I don't believe we have an update yet, but we have, our public works director is gonna be hiring somebody to investigate. That's in a difficult, very inaccessible location. So we're gonna get people up there, get photographs of the location, work with any property owners we have to to get access.
Is the plan to, I would be interested in knowing the results. If anybody else would be, perhaps, if there's two other people who want to see this, maybe we agenda some staff report about it. But I don't know. I'd like to, I'd like to know what happens.
Yeah, the council would like a report back in open session. We'd be happy to do that.
That's a good idea.
I see a lot of heads nodding.
I didn't get a.
Oh, okay. You never know. I just assumed it went to everybody.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion on, or a resolution to perhaps adopt here?
I move, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-.
90.
90. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, accepting $6 million from Pacific Gas &amp; Electric, PG&E, arising out of the settlement agreement approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC.
A second. All right, moved in seconded. Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, moving on. 8C. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the employment agreement with Jeff D. Malpe, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, based on state law, I have to recuse myself and leave the room for this item, so I'm gonna switch places with terrapists and sit now and wish you a good night.
Wait a minute. Don't you have to come back and do the staff report?
No, I'm not allowed to do that.
I think as mayor, I think I have to recuse myself. No.
Well, I think, mayor and council members, I am presenting the report that I prepared. So the, what's before you tonight on this agenda item is a amendment or change to the compensation provisions of the city manager's employment agreement. There's two proposed changes. One is that the, that the council authorize $13,800 per year to the existing 457 account that the city manager has right now. The effect of that is essentially changing the, having a city pay for the partial funding of that account. That account can have up to $18,500 in it, so the city manager, if he wanted to fully fund it, he would, he would be funding that with his money. And then there's an increase in the life insurance benefit that's being proposed from $200,000 to $400,000. And I think that the reason for that, the reason that's being recommended is that it kind of brings it in line with what the compensation the city manager receives. The $200,000 is below his base salary, and it seems logical that it be more in line with, you know, one and a half times of his gross salary, you know, to protect his family and such. So those are the main changes. And I also, in the, in the letter, it restates that the cost of living, the automatic cost of living adjustments will continue. I just thought it was important that, since we're looking at it again, that we make it clear that that continues. So that's the end of the staff report on this item. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Rubens? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution 2018-.
91.
91. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos amending the employment agreement with Jeff D. Malpe, city manager.
Second.
Right, it's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item 8D. Consideration of adopting a resolution awarding discretionary bonus to Jeff D. Malpe, city manager pursuant to terms of the existing employment agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is something new to the council. It's a discretionary performance bonus for the city manager. It's been in the city manager's employment agreement since 2014, but the council has not decided to provide the discretionary bonus since that time. City manager's performance was last reviewed in 2016. So what's being recommended is the performance bonus up to what the contract allows, 10% of his gross salary for the, for the past two years, ending at the June 30th, 2018, excuse me, 2017 and 2018. And the amounts are $25,311 for June 30th, up to June 30th, 2017, and $25,692 for the period ending June 30th, 2018. Those are, those funds would come out of the general fund, and there is a sufficient balance in the general fund to pay for that bonus that the council has included in the city manager's contract. I might add that the reason for the, the amount being recommended is based upon the positive and outstanding review the city council provided to the city manager for the past few years. And so with that, it's your, it's your decision on the amount of the bonus, but that's the recommendation based upon the performance review that was provided.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-92.
92.
92. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos awarding a discretionary bonus to Jeff D. Malpe, city manager pursuant to the terms of the existing employment agreement.
A second. Right, it's been moved in seconded. Mr. Grocott?
So I didn't make any comment on the previous action because I wanted to consolidate. And I want to make a point here. I've actually voted against all the employment agreements that have come across the dais recently, and I wish now to make a statement of why. And that is because, number one, the 3% automatic cost of living adjustment, I don't think is proper. I much prefer what we've done with the city manager, where we offer a bonus for getting the job done, as opposed to something being automatic. And one of the reasons I do not like the 3% cost of living adjustment is because it's a little bit like the dog chasing its tail, I guess might be a way to put it, in that much of the inflation we experience is a result of government costs going up. And then government is, government, people who work in government are benefiting from that because they're getting a cost of living adjustment. And meanwhile, people who work in the private sector, majority, do not get such adjustments. They have to go in and do a review and so forth, similar to what we've done with the city manager. But, you know, I know, for example, with my wife and where she works, there's no cost of living automatic adjustment. She has to write a report about how she did for the year. She has to write a report about how she did for the year and give expectations for the next year and meet certain goals and so forth. Again, similar to what we do with Jeff on this bonus, but nothing is automatic. And I think that's not really the proper way to go, and that's why I have voted against those. And then lastly, because a concern of mine that I raised a number of years ago had to do with unfunded liabilities and pensions, and the more we increase salaries of employees, the more that becomes a problem. And I just don't think the state is taking it seriously enough, the unfunded liabilities. And so far, so long as they're not, it's really difficult for me to award pay raises to employees. Thank you.
Mr. Rubens, I think we might have misspoke this a little bit. Isn't, isn't the cost of living increase, because Mr. Malpe's employment contract contains a paragraph that says if other members of the, of the employees get a raise, he is entitled to the same, same amount. It's not an automatic 3% cost of living, is it? I believe it just has to do with the tying of the other contracts. Isn't that true?
That's correct. It's if the management group receives a cost of living adjustment, then the city manager gets, receives the same.
But if they got nothing, it would not be an automatic.
He would, if, if there was no increase based on cost of living for management group, he would not get an increase.
Right. Just want to make sure everybody understands.
No, I understand, but it's automatic down the line.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure that it's understood from the outside that it's not an automatic whatever happens, so. All right, so we have.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Just a brief comment. I have to be careful about what I say because the negotiations are in closed session. I will say that personally, I don't view any of the salary increase discussions that I've been involved in as something that I do automatically. I do them based on situations and data and information and competitive environment. So that may just be me, but that's how I look at it.
All right, so is there a motion on the floor? All right, it was, I apologize. Must be getting late. It's after nine o'clock. Okay.
We have a motion.
Yeah, I know, not 10:30. All right, so it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, thank you. Council members, reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees? Any comments? Mr. Grocott?
Not anything to do with committees, but just with businesses downtown on Laurel Street unhappy about diseased trees that are making the sidewalks sticky, cars that park sticky. If we could get something done to address that problem, there would be a lot of business owners downtown who would be very happy about it.
Is that Park and Rec, Ms. Peterson?
It's Public Works.
Or is that Public Works? Stephen, you're just, just piling on you.
He's writing notes as I.
Thank you, Stephen. Perhaps we can look into that. Mr. Obert?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I had an item I wanted to bring up for council consideration, see if it's something the council wants to consider putting on the agenda. I learned the other week that a bunch of, of the nonprofit groups, nonreligious nonprofit groups in San Carlos, who have used Mahaney Hall over the years for various services like Lions and whatnot, and various programs, they are doing a fundraiser to help do some sprucing up for the place. I was surprised to learn that apparently the church that runs that tends to let these groups use it for free. So, but it gets run down, and there's, there's sort of no income stream coming into it. And so my idea was to see if the council would be willing to consider making some modest contribution towards this fundraising effort to help improve what is essentially a community resource. Now, it is a community resource, that's also part of a religious organization, so, but it is a community hall there. So I wanted to bring that up to see if there was any interest in having the matter come before us and learn more about what we could or couldn't do, and then perhaps make a contribution or not.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Be happy to have it on the dais as well.
All right. I, I'm not certainly in agreement, but I did make a donation individually, so, to that cause, because I won't be able to be there that evening, and it's going to be, when they're going to have a fundraiser. But that's fine, we've got three people, so perhaps we can look at that, Ms. Peterson, and figure out a time in the next, in the next meeting or the next couple of meetings to throw that on there, the agenda.
I just have one question. We're not violating any separation between church and state by contributing to.
That's one of the things we'll be looking at, to see how, if that's the council's direction, how we can structure it to not, to comply.
Okay. If we decide to even go through with it. Mr. Grocott?
Are you going to mention the event you went to and gave a proclamation?
Oh, yes.
Because I was going to mention something.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I'll follow up on you.
No, I appreciate it. We had an event last, we could go Saturday, a proclamation for St. Charles Church is 90 years old. It was 90 years old on September 1st. I believe it's the oldest church in, religious church in, in the city, and they had a, I had an outdoor mass sort of recreating what it was like 90 years ago. And then they had a nice reception where I gave them a proclamation from, from the city of San Carlos, and Mr. Grocott, unfortunately, wasn't feeling well, but we also have a coin that we, he indicated we were going to give to them also, so from the city coin.
Which was done, and just something that came about from the research that was pretty interesting is, the city of San Carlos was incorporated in 1925, and there were a number of Catholic families in San Carlos at the time, of course. And three years later is when the Archbishop, I guess, from San Francisco authorized there to be a congregation, a church established in San Carlos, just three years later.
And just to make sure that, to set the record straight, I was not part of that group in 1928.
But you were mayor.
But I was mayor, right. Obviously. Okay, staff comments or city administrative business?
Just a couple of reminders. We have the Public Safety Fair coming up this Sunday. It'll be at the same time as the farmer's market. They'll be fun for all, people of all ages. We'll have a bounce house and representatives from our fire and police departments, as well as Public Works. And we'll also be issuing a spotlight newsletter this month on public safety and emergency preparedness, recognizing that it's National Preparedness Month. And that is all.
Okay, is that all we have? All right, anything else? If not, meaning adjourned. Thank you.